I would like to call to order the Wednesday, February 28th, 2018, Algonquin, Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee Open Meeting to Order. Hello, everyone. The first item on the agenda is the action on minutes. Paul?
So I move that we approve the minutes from the open meeting of January 17th, 2018.
Second? Moved by Paul Bucka, seconded by Joan. Anybody have any comments or corrections? You're good?
Not really, I just got them.
Oh, all right. Shall we hold them?
I think that's a good idea.
You think it's a good idea, hold them?
I do, I mean, we all just got them, right?
Okay. We, yes. Then we will hold them until next meeting, that's fine. Everyone has a chance to look them over. Okay, next item on the agenda is educational policy. First is approval of DECA's overnight field trip to the DECA Massachusetts Career Development Conference on March 8th to 10th in Boston, Mass.
Madam Chair, if I could suggest, we have three annual field trips that come before us, two for DECA for their state competition and then in preparation, as I'm sure they will have folks that are qualifying for nationals again this year, which is field trip number one, their overnight field trip, and field trip number three on the list for their international campaign, as we know, they're time sensitive, so approval this evening would be requested. And the second is also the Havinger's overnight field trip to the Columbia Scholastic Press, where we always hear great things about our students and our budding journalists when they attend a conference as well. So I would request that we approve the first three, as they are annual field trips that come before us.
Paul?
I would agree with that, and these are things we do all the time, and they're great programs. I would move that the committee approve the three overnight field trip requests for the DECA overnight field trip to Boston, Mass., the Havinger overnight field trip to Columbia Scholastic, and the DECA overnight field trip to Atlanta, Georgia, as submitted.
Second? Moved by Paul Bucka, seconded by Paul Desmond. Any questions, comments? These come before us every single year.
Every year.
Yeah. All right, and all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
And Madam Chair, the fourth field trip before you this evening is a French exchange students group, which actually is supported by our student travel policy J-300. I do have copies of that with us, with me this evening, if we'd like to make reference with that. This is a trip that routinely, or I wouldn't say routinely, but from year to year, students participate in. It is not necessarily funded in any way through our operational budget or our school, any type of student funds that are collected by the district, but it is something that, you know, supports international travel for our students to have the opportunity to do that on an individual basis. We do, and we have had the conversations about making sure that we provide clarity around these trips and provide for our school community an indication whether or not they are school committee sanctioned. And the trip before you this evening is here for your consideration. Many times we've discussed how much we enjoy our students experiencing travel abroad, international travel, and that it's an enriching experience. We have under consideration policy J-300, however, at this time, the policy is as it stands. So the policy before us this evening is really because it's consistent with the language currently in this policy J-300 student travel specifically, and I can read the excerpt if it's most applicable. It does talk a lot about the approval of the field trips that you just approved this evening, but the most relevant paragraph is, "Teachers and other school staff are prohibited from soliciting for privately run trips to school system and in schools. The school committee will only review for approval school sanctioned trips. The school committee will not review or approve trips that are privately organized and run without school sanctioning." So it's before the committee tonight, and again, I know this is something that we're discussing in policy, and we've had discussions about this, and clearly, we want to continue those conversations. It's a very controversial discussion, and I think that's why it's still in policy. And there are many different viewpoints around global travel as sponsored by a school district. We know that, at this point, our advice from council has always been that they should not be school sanctioned, but I know that this is very, something very important to our students and our staff to continue to revisit as well for consideration. So the request is to approve or to state that there is no approval for this trip based on current policy, and it is not a school sanctioned trip.
So do we have a motion so that we can, we can talk about it? So I move that we approve the requested overnight field trip to France as submitted.
Moved by Paul Bucka, seconded by Joan. Okay, now let's discuss. Paul?
So this release and agreement, I mean, do our attorneys think this is enough to kind of absolve us from all concerns on this thing? Or is it just, you know, we're trying to go through some sort of a visible, we're not really sanctioning this, you're kind of doing this on your own?
Right. That is really the last conversation that the committee has had. You know, I applaud our teachers for continuing to bring new opportunities to our students. We do have two here this evening who routinely participate in these types of travel with our students, but I think the concern around council is the issue of liability for a student, for trips that are sanctioned by our school system, and what is that responsibility? And at this point, it is a private, refunded experience, so it's through a private tour company. I will say that over the years, we have built up a very strong partnership and relationship with specific schools, as indicated in the paperwork, because of the frequency of conversations and exchange in not just travel, but throughout the years. I know they've come to visit us and spend a week with us as well, but at this point, policy does not provide for that.
And this is the fourth time that we've actually had this exchange, or this tour thing going, from what the paperwork says?
I, you know, I can't speak to it specifically. I know that there have been trips to France with this exchange, but there have also been trips in other locations of the world that might take place in the summer and so forth. I think the challenge has always been, if it is not a school sanctioned trip, then by the mere fact that the trips are conducted by our staff, it gives the perception that it is a school sponsored trip, and therefore then may not be as clear to our parents. And we have discussed this many times at school committee, and I think the last time might have been two years ago, when we actually had this kind of discussion before the committee. And the discussion at that point was to send a clear message to the parents, what the position was of the school district on these types of trips, based on the policy.
So, just compare and contrast it to the DECA trip. I mean, it's the same thing, right? They pay for their EFIR, they go someplace, they're paying the fees, it's, in this case, they're leaving the country, but, you know, I mean, we've sent them to Salt Lake City, we've sent them to, we were sending them to Atlanta, Georgia. It's mostly on their dime, I believe, and, I mean, so, but DECA is a school sponsored program, but that doesn't, you could participate in DECA here and not have to go to Atlanta, but we let them go to Atlanta. I mean, you know, this paperwork says this is the fourth time we've done it with this high school, right? So I'm not, I mean, certainly the release form makes it real clear in my mind that we don't want anything to do with this from a liability point of view. I'm kind of okay with it, I think.
Joan?
I have, I'm just a little confused, since I have two questions. So it seems like that this is, we've done it, this is the fourth time, two or two, we've had the students from France over here in October. So it seems like it's an exchange program we have that's going on, but yet, at the same time, question, is this one of those trips where, because there's 27 students going and three teachers? Are the chaperones' trip being paid by the number of students that are attending? So if you get, if you take five kids, you get one chaperone. If you take 10, you get two free chaperones. So are the chaperones paying for their own, or are they being paid by the company because we have 27 students going?
It's my belief that the chaperones' fees are covered by the company or the organization that they work through. So either it's through the student fees to cover, the chaperone fee is a better answer.
So we have this private enterprise along with it, with an exchange school that's over in Paris? Or is it a combination, too, or is it the private organization that arranges all of this, and they arrange the exchange back and forth?
So it's my understanding that for this specific French one, it is an exchange program between two schools, not necessarily that you have the private entity of a company that charges the fee to arrange to cover for the chaperones.
Okay. All right.
I think the teachers at the two schools have built up a relationship over time, which, it's an educational partnership, and the visit is part of the trip that the students participate in.
Okay. I can go down the line. Lynn? Oh, I'm sorry, Joan, are you done?
No, I have one more.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Go ahead. I noticed in here that they said that there's hotels for the students in the location, but yet, in the first paragraph, it said that this is the fourth exchange and that they are invited to their counterparts' homes during April break. So it says they're being invited to the Parisian homes, but yet, we have hotels. So where will the students be staying?
So that I would have to clarify, but I do know that the push is to have the host's families over there have our students stay with them. That is the purpose of the exchange program.
Okay. So just because we have the teacher in the audience, right? Could we invite her up to join you and give us the clarification right now?
So Lauren Osipchak is with us.
Lauren, right here.
You were asking, oh, thank you. I'm Lauren Osipchak.
Hi.
How are you? And you were asking about the itinerary.
Mm-hmm.
Is that right?
Well, hotels versus...
Hotels versus homes. And the first, it says that the counterparts, that the counterparts' homes during April break. So it said, I assume when I read this first, it was homes, and then I go further and I see there's a hotel.
Yes. If you look at, we, there's an itinerary attached. Naturally, it's very hard to say we're going to go to France and not visit Paris. So we fly into Paris, and we have a, this is where we have a guided tour. We have a full-time director, this is from the company, Promator. And we visit Paris for a couple of days, and then we take a fast train down to Cétyen, and that's when that part of the exchange starts, where we stay for a week.
In the homes?
They stay at their counterparts' homes, yes, and I stay at the teacher's house.
Okay.
And we visit the school, and we visit two other places, Lyon, which is a very, which is the second largest city. And, yeah, so we do two, we do a little touring, but there's also activities with the students and the families, the families. They, most of the students, the French students, have been hosted by the American students, and they have a great bond already.
And then what with the chaperones, will you be in a home?
We'll have a chaperone then when we are going. We're going to be staying at the, at the French teacher, she's also the assistant principal of the high school, Saint Paul. And we stay there, we go during the day, at night.
Oh, so you stay with, you stay with the staff?
We stay with the French teacher at night, and then we go, we meet them at a point in the morning, and we tour, one time with a bus, one time on a train. We go to Lyon, we have a tour guide.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else?
Yeah, we're going down the line.
Oh, please.
Make yourself comfortable.
So on the, on the release agreement, we talked about this in policy, too, about having this, and it states that it's not a school sponsored trip. So are we, so if we vote to approve, then then the trip becomes school sponsored, correct? So then this release doesn't come into play. So if you, if we don't, if we vote not to have it be school sponsored, they, the trip would still go on as it has in the past few years, it just, we would then be able to put this release into play, but it won't be into play if we say it's, if we vote to make it a school sponsored trip. Because we haven't really discussed and come to a resolution as a school committee, what, how we want to treat this. And we talked about it in policy about the differences between foreign travel versus domestic travel. What are the, what are some of the risks that the school department, or the school committee would be taking under our auspices by sponsoring trips versus a domestic flight? So one, you know, is passports, things that could happen with a student's passport. There's all sorts of, you know, things that could happen there that would involve the State Department as opposed to, you know, or an embassy as opposed to a, an domestic trip, which wouldn't have some of those complications. I'm just thinking, something as simple as a student, I know there's a lot of, my kids have traveled to foreign countries in group trips, and a lot, there are a lot of precautions to, to secure others, the student's passports and make sure that they're not lost, but some of it involves taking a photocopy of the passport, in which case, if the actual passport was lost, then you have to go to the State Department and all that kind of stuff.
Right, there's a level of complexity that doesn't exist in domestic trips.
Yeah. So I know we talked about it and haven't been able to bring it forward to the committee yet, and up, and that's where this release came from.
This is one of the reasons why I can't.
Yes, and that was developed by the attorney to address the concerns. It was just saying, we do not approve this trip, and it goes for, you know, the public to so note that it is not a school sponsored trip, but we did commit to continue to review this. We do know it's important for our students and that we have a number of staff who, you know, are willing to participate and support our students in this endeavor. I just want to address another part of the conversation that we had in committee, and I think it goes back to Paul's comment about domestic versus international. And I think some of the discussions have been, and certainly, we want to revisit this, the purpose of the trip. In the cases where the robotics team may go to, you know, trying to think where they went last, Tennessee, I believe, or DECA travels to, it's connected to a co-curricular event, that's a specific competition, and they are invited to participate, and the entire time they're there, they're under the auspices of the school district and its sanctioned chaperones. And so there was a slight differential there in the conversation about the purpose of the trip, and arguably, you know, it is, it's fantastic that we've built up, and our students have built up such positive relationships with students abroad, and you hope that would continue. But what is the definition of travel for a vacation or as part of a trip for cultural enrichment, not necessarily tied to an academic purpose? We actually got into this conversation again about, you know, our musicians being invited to perform. Scotland has a play competition every year, and lots of times, different troops will get invited from different high schools to attend, or the band might be invited to compete internationally. And what is that fine line between going for personal growth in recreation and secondarily having alliances with folks and staying in their homes versus a very structured competitive environment that's governed by, you know, a university or a school? And I think it's something clearly that we've been struggling with and want to provide every opportunity for our students, and we would need to revisit this, I think, because it is, it is a critical conversation.
May I just respond to a couple of things you said, please, regarding the international aspect, which is obviously very important. I've traveled many times with students with another company, EF Tours, as have my colleagues, and I've learned the wonderful protocol, how, you know, with their help and also at my last job, where the whole school practically traveled, three buses. This is not a very wealthy town, too. That was in Dudley, Dudley, Charlton. And so we, we really work at this, you know, how to, how to, all the details you're mentioning, the passports, we even talk about how to walk down a city street and how to be polite, all those things, and along with the help from, and the guidance from the travel companies. EF Tours and now Promator is very good for France, for the more, our trip is, is, you know, different than the average trip. So I just wanted to share that we have a lot of experience and take every precaution and actually have meetings and et cetera. Just wanted to share that.
Paul?
So I understand that we're still working on this policy, it sounds fairly complex, but for the issue before us here, it seems to be fairly simple, because as it stands now, this is an independently run, non-school, non-school sponsored exchange trip. That's what it says in a couple of places here. But I don't understand why we're voting on this at all. If we don't do anything, they can go, right? And I wouldn't want to do anything to stop them from going, but I also wouldn't want to do anything for us to take on, you know, responsibility that we don't currently own.
Yeah, and so if we don't approve, you're still going?
Right. Well, yes. We just want to feel like we're valorized or somehow, I wouldn't use the word sanction, because it's clearly added value to the school district to have such a program, you know, that lasts in time, and I can tell you lots of things. So, yes, we, we just, we are hoping, Christine and I and others hope that we can come to the policy where even if it's not, doesn't fit the model of the typical overnight trip to a nearby, we're hoping that we can somehow valorize it, you know, with another term, that's all. So that's, that's why we're here.
I appreciate that, and I agree with you, but I don't think we're there yet in terms of policy, so.
So just to...
So what if we just do nothing?
The purpose, the, the purpose of tonight was exactly that, there, and I know there's confusion because I received some phone calls from parents expressing their viewpoints about why isn't the school doing this, or why is the school doing this and allowing it or not allowing it? And so the reason that the school committee really took this conversation up two years ago was to clear up until such time as something changes, not prohibiting them in any way from participating, but rather to make publicly clear that this is not a school sponsored event, parents have a choice to send their children or not. You know, Lauren, as an individual, not as a teacher here at Algonquin Regional High School, is participating in these tours, and really, the parents need to understand that. And that was the sole purpose of it coming before the committee, as we continue to have some conversations about how we want to, as a district, discuss and develop this policy. So Lauren just mentioned, she had asked, should she come here this evening? And what I did say to her at that time was, really, the place for conversation with an exchange of information, and it was great to have you here, was when we took this up at the policy, where we can dig a little bit more deeply into the conversations and ask a lot more questions. And she's persistent, we've had five years now of conversations about this, but it is good to see that our teachers, you know, are there for our students in different ways, but that in of itself creates the misperception that it's school sponsored, because it's a teacher at our school. And, you know, as many positives, there are things that we need to be mindful of as we take up the conversation, and as we move through this policy, be aware of certain circumstances that if we're changing our policy, we want to make sure we have language that supports it or, you know, supports these initiatives. So that is why it's here tonight.
So it sounds like in the policy discussion, we have to come up with a method of handling situations just like this. This is obviously a program that we want to encourage because, you know, that international, I mean, our kids are only getting more global, right? They're not, so, so we need, we need to come up with some sort of a, I don't know, I'm not even, let's not even deliberate it here, but something so that we can acknowledge and give you validity without legally sponsoring you, because that's the concern.
Okay.
So I don't want to disapprove, because I don't want it to look like we did not, we like, so can we just read?
Can I move that we indefinitely postpone this?
Oh.
Second.
That's an excellent suggestion. Indefinitely postpone.
That's wonderful, that's great.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you at the policy subcommittee meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Funnel.
We do.
Oh, it's not too late, Paul. We'll see you before this.
See her before this?
I don't know. Okay. Next on the agenda, lost my agenda, next on the agenda is new business update on the NIASC five-year summary report status.
It is hard to believe that five years ago, NIASC, New England Association of Schools and Colleges, who is a private organization, and it is a private organization, a committee that represents public secondary schools, visited our school community. A lot of great work at that time was put in by members of our school community and our staff, and five years, which is typical, New England Association of Schools and Colleges revisits the original report that was issued, and it is the responsibility of the school administration and staff to provide responses to those recommendations, commendations, and in-progress items that may have remained from the last visit. I think there would be no better way for a new principal to get to know a little bit more about the school from the lens of others than to have this great opportunity to be here looking at the five-year report. So I asked Sarah just to give us a brief update tonight, and the committee doesn't usually respond in any way until they've had such time to really fully vet the report, which can be sometime. So I know you're working on the report, and maybe you can just talk a little bit about that.
Absolutely, thank you. So as Superintendent Johnson spoke, it is a ten-year cycle, and we are at our fifth year. Our self-study was back in 2013, and Mr. Mead led the two-year report at the time that it was needed. For our self-study, we received 21 general recommendations, which is pretty normal, and from those, the first round for the two-year report, they worked on in-progress or future date, meaning it was planned off towards the five-year report. During the five-year report, we again revisit the 21 general recommendations, and you also receive some highlighted recommendations that we go over. And so what we decided to do as a school-based leadership team is we came together with SBLT, school-based leadership team, in a very collaborative approach. We reviewed all of the original document from the self-study, reviewed the two-year response, and then gone into the work of the five-year report. And we broke up the 21 recommendations, posted them all around the room, did the work that you would do in some of our excellent classrooms, and did a gallery walk, pulled in other faculty members, created subgroups where necessary, redid parts of the self-study to see the progress that we made in each one of the 21 recommendations, whether they were completed or not completed, and he asked you to go back to all of the original 21. So it's, it's an awesome lens that I had the opportunity to do. And what we found was that we now have eight fully completed recommendations, and the 13 in progress, we have none that were pushed off or planned for the future. All our recommendations are completed or currently in progress, which is a true testament to the phenomenal work that our educators do at Algonquin and the support that we have from the community, school committee members and parents. So we're very excited about that. So once each of the subgroups was able to do the gallery walk and present all of the different pieces of evidence that spoke to our level of excellence and our ability to reflect and continue to push and be innovative, they produced the written component, which goes into the report, and those are being peer reviewed in order to complete the final report for the five-year report.
Okay.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to the superintendent's report to the committee, starting with the principal's report.
So keep on going.
Excellent. Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking Central Office Superintendent Johnson and our school committee members and our parents' community for their unwavering support and collaboration. Genuinely appreciate, I can't say it enough. And that transitions to our eighth grade parent night, where we were able to host our Melican and Trotter parents. We mixed it up a little bit this year through some reflection and looking back at some of our successes and requests from last year. For our eighth grade parent night, we reached out to some of our seniors and juniors and had them come and speak to our parents from their perspective on how well they felt prepared, and that came back as a positive feedback. Parents really connected to what they heard the students saying, so that was exciting. We also expanded how our eighth grade parent night works, is that we included our Algonquin Writing Center. I know you guys have heard me speak about our Algonquin Writing Center and the successes. We had tutors there that night, so our parents could actually speak to our peer-to-peer tutors about the work that we do cross-curriculately on supporting any student, any level, on any assignment for any writing needs. And so that was a true testament to the... And so that was a true testament to the ongoing excellence and innovativeness of Algonquin. So I wanted to start there. Hopefully, everyone made it to Jazz Night last night, another vertical great team in collaboration, where we had a guest musician, Mark Zaleski, and he works with both our high school and middle school fine arts programs. And then throughout the day, so yesterday they had this opportunity to work with him. And then at night, both the middle schools and high school come together here at Algonquin, and they perform, this phenomenal performance. Hopefully, you were able to swing by. It was also video, so it'll be shared as that as well. And then I'm going to move on to the escape room. I don't know if anyone's participated in the escape room, but our kiddos love it. And through some grant work that we did, our US One educator, Ms. Braun, worked with our librarian, Ms. Honey, and they created this just unique, interesting way for students to apply the skills in US One through critical thinking in the escape room concept. So it's super exciting for kids to have that real-life application, and they're learning all these skills, completely enjoying it. So I actually participated in one of the escape rooms, and I didn't escape very well. That's okay. Learning everybody's, you know, safe learning environment. Moving on to clubs and activities, I wanted to give a shout out to our DECA students from Student Support. They completed and did very well in their first DECA competition. Very, very exciting. I have a little picture there. And I want to do a nice shameless plug for our Best Buddies Friendship Ball, which is coming up this Friday. I feel like whenever Algonquin has a dance, it has to snow. I want to apologize to the community for some snowflakes coming up on this Friday. They should be done by the time the Best Buddies Dance comes. The reason that I want to talk about the Best Buddies Dance is that it works so that Algonquin becomes the host school for the Best Buddies programs and the Friendship programs, in which local schools like Shrewsbury High School, Westboro High School, they come here to Algonquin. So multiple programs come here together, and all the best buddies come together and help grow the program. Phenomenal in how they set the dance up. Mr. Hausmann works to empower our students to actually build this dance, build the activities, come up with alternative rooms, work with our parents. So shameless plugging for this Friday. It's, you know, open for those to attend, and we're really excited to have the event. And the snow should end by noon, so we should be completely fine by that time. I want to move on to the next page. Our Science Olympiad, I think competed in a recent MIT event. I snuck in a little picture for that because it's a great opportunity for them to prepare for upcoming state competitions, and they were super excited to be a part of that. In athletics, I am not going to sit here and name all of the teams. I put them in there, but again, excellence at Algonquin. So we have multiple teams that are in tournament play, sectional, states, individuals. I want to do a shout out for our Hawaiian shirt section last night. Awesome, just true T-Hawk Nation cheering on our basketball team, which went on to win. So I hope the Hawaiian shirts come back for tomorrow when we play away in tournament play, but it's, again, just shows the work that Mr. Whitney has done on really making that supportive T-Hawk Nation and supporting each other's and having positive chants and bringing us together as a school. In our Applied Arts and Technology Department, I wanted to give some kudos to Ms. Riley's class. They prepared different promotional presentations, and they went all the way to Gillette to present them and receive feedback. Just great global skills. Hearing me talk about our fine arts, but it is just phenomenal, phenomenal work. We had another Gallery of the Burrows. It's their third show where we bring outside artists in for our kiddos to come and tour. And on the next page, you'll see that two of our artists' work received Boston Globe's Scholarship Art and Writing Awards. So I included both images, as I had to. Lucy's artwork on Disappear, which is the first image, and Grace's artwork on Untitled with Balloons, again, shows the phenomenal opportunities that we offer our students and the great work that our educators do and students do to produce such phenomenal work. Our Poetry Out Loud is in its 11th year. Thank you to North Borough Cable Access for videoing it. We had quite a few students participate. Eight students went on, and then three students made our finalists. And I really want to thank our Algonquin faculty as they come together to support the students. You know, we had Fine Arts Department head involved, Facilities Manager, Mr. Gorman, educators step up. It really does take a village, and it's amazing to see how Algonquin always comes together to support each other against across a myriad of events. Guidance, the Friday right before break, we brought in a guest speaker, Mr. Travis Roy, and he spoke to our freshmen and sophomores about powerful choices and how that impacts your life. And we're going to bring back an equally awesome opportunity with Kevin Brooks, who will speak to our junior and seniors. Our APTO is also going to have Kevin Brooks available for our parent community to speak with them that night, too, so that way the conversations that are happening in school can transition to conversations that you have at home, and that helps reinforce some positive choices. And kudos to Lisa Connery. She ran a wonderful, wonderful online course selection process presentation last night at APTO. Algonquin is doing something new this year, which is very exciting and isn't necessarily new to our college kiddos, so it's a great skill to teach our kids. They will do course selection completely online this year. So instead of doing the paper and circle the class and what you want, they're learning how you do in college so that they have one more skill set to help a nice transition for when they get to college. So that is really exciting, and our parents got to experience how that process works. I added in that I'm not doing too well at Book Bingo, but it is a great initiative. I've got the four corners. I just can't seem to get the three across. But I want to say thank you to our librarian, Ms. Honey. She really is finding innovative ways to include all of Algonquin into libraries. So one of them was Book Bingo. We have great competition. There's some sheets up on the desk as you leave if you want to grab some Book Bingo. Competition is heating up, just like it is in Kahoot. And then under math, I included a discussion about the Advanced Math Functions Project-Based Learning. So students do some intense work, some semester work on researching and analyzing some items about a global city. And then their job is after they come up with all the regression models and different characteristics about that, they create a model to see if there's another city that mirrors that same aspect. So they took all these skills and then they applied it lifetime. And that is the work that really sets Algonquin at its excellence, is we take learning beyond the classroom. We give you the skill to have the learning happen outside the brick and mortar of the walls. And so I wanted to make sure that I highlighted that. So that's my principal report. I could go on and on. I do want to commend myself to keep you down to four pages, although I did two front back. I fell a long way. And just genuinely appreciate the confidence and support that we have from our community or school committee and our central office. Thank you.
Thank you.
One comment. I was really glad to see that Kevin Brooks will be speaking about impaired driving for the juniors and seniors, and I'm really glad to hear you say he's speaking to the APTO as well because, I mean, that's the kind of thing I think we can't get enough of. I would even suggest starting younger. You know, I understand that it's targeted at driving-age kids, but, you know, the message he has, I think, applies school-wide. So anyway, good to see that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And the timing is intentional, right when he comes, right before potentially season. Yeah, it was intentionally planned, and the conversation hopefully with APTO, with our parents who have students at every grade level, can kind of give that wraparound at the lower grade levels. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
I would just like to share something, but I didn't know. It's up to you, Chair, because it involves the gymnastic team and something that was in the newspaper, a comment from the coach, but if you want me to do an audience sharing or if you'd like me to?
Oh, no, do it now because.
Okay. It was the Mid-Walk League Championship for the gymnastic team. So I just happened to be reading at it, and just like what you said about the T-Hawk Nation, and hidden deep into the article, but it is true highlight, I think of the sport programs that we have and the values that we try to teach the children, that it isn't always about winning. And they had interviewed the coach, and her name is Jan Cook. And I just want to read the one comment that she had, because as they were interviewing her, they were talking about, you know, the preparation for the team and winning and everything. And she said, quote-unquote, "We decided not to focus on winning exactly. Instead, we focused on things like discipline, work ethic, and sportsmanship. We tried to do everything right and put in the work to do what is needed to make progress, and it paid off today." And I think, when I saw that, I went, wow, we're teaching kids life skills and members of society. Sometimes it isn't just about winning. It's sportsmanship. It's a work ethic. And what they learn in sports and what they learn in music is what they put into their everyday lives and when they take their chosen careers. So when I saw that, deep into the article, I went, wow, that is a great coach. And I'm sure that goes to all the other ones. So kudos to your staff, and please take that back to, you know, Jen, is it Jen? Jen? Jane Cook. And please let her know. I mean, that was just a, I mean, it isn't all about winning all the time. And sometimes we think that it is, we have so many banners. It's more of what they're, how they're building the student. And I was just a part of Algonquin, I read that, because I'm sure every coach would almost say the same exact thing. So thank you for bringing, installing that work ethic and thank the coaches.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always tough to follow Sarah, and I keep thinking I'm going to move the principal's report to the end, even though budget is very exciting. And I also think that, you know, certainly with all of the concerns and our heartfelt thoughts going out to those students and community members in Florida, it's also an appropriate time to just share with the community that the kinds of things that we've been listening to are so very important. Making those connections with our students is really about creating a safe school environment, and that's something that we enjoy here and certainly within our communities of Southborough and Cade and Northborough as well. And that in this district, our highest priority is on safe school readiness. It has been for many years, and five years ago, we launched a significant school readiness plan, which we have continued to review, if not twice, three times, four times a year, at least once a quarter. And we do that in collaboration with all of our administrative team, our staff, and with the good work of our safety officials. There are many, many drills and practices that are, that take place all through the year, not only here on this campus, but on all of our school campuses and with our town officials. But we appreciate that students learn best when students feel safe, and that is, again, our highest priority. Next month, we will have a much larger update at the school committee meeting, and we have had since Monday, many, many conversations with our safety officials and our administrators, just reviewing our practices to ensure that while it is impossible to expect or to know what the unexpected might bring, it is possible to be as prepared and as ready as we can. Here in our district, five years ago, in one wonderful summer, we hosted Homeland Security. Here on campus, we invited all of the police departments from across the Commonwealth, as well as school systems, to engage in an active conversation about what school readiness meant, but more importantly, how we can work with our students who may feel disenfranchised and how we can make them, how we can connect them better to our schools. This has been a commitment here at Algonquin, so much so that we were invited to present before the Educational Commission when they decided to add some language to the latest opioid bill. We talked all about why we don't need to spend five minutes asking students questions because we had a policy and protocol around making connections every day with our students so that they feel part of the community. There is absolutely no way you can walk away from hearing a presentation like Dr. Walsh just gave without thinking about the ways in which students reach out to adults and adults reach out to students on a daily basis in many and varied ways. And that is something we invest, we invest in daily. I'd love to have Lisa Connery. She's on deck to do a guidance presentation. They are launching, again, not a new program, but an enhanced version of making connections with students and making sure that every student has an adult present in their lives. We know that's very important, an adult that they can go to. We really believe in see something, say something, and we will do something, and that's very much part of our work. There are many things that are taking place that, under the national law provision of in order to be secure, some of these cannot be talked about in public session, but we have had many, many conversations about enhancing and upgrading facilities and always being mindful of our drills. So four years ago, I think, was our first introduction of Alice. We were ahead of the curve in the district, which was the whole notion, don't hide, run. There are other things. You're empowered to make decisions at critical points in time, and we've invested a lot of time and energy, as has our police department, in helping us train. If you have youngsters in the schools, you know, you've heard perhaps about it, maybe you've participated in one of our many workshops. We continue to be validated by our parents who work in other districts, and they tell us, oh, my gosh, we're just starting that now. So certainly want to reassure parents that we are mindful of what is most important, and we put that to practice. However, there are circumstances that we can't share all the details, but we can certainly share what we're doing, when we're doing it, and that students are safe here on campus and in all of our schools. So Friday, Thursday or Friday, we've spent the entire week just reconnecting with one another, revisiting some of our conversations and practices. And on Thursday or Friday of this week, I'll be sending out a communication with just some times, open coffee hours for parents to come in, have conversations if they would like next week. And again, there's, you know, a lot we can share, and there's a lot that we cannot share. So I just wanted to provide that update. Thank you.
I think it's great to hear about the connections because that's important for safety and for so many other things. It's really, and to hear all the wonderful things that you guys are doing is pretty impressive. A lot of different offerings for a lot of different kids and their interests.
Thank you. Okay, more to follow. And now we can talk about budget, which is also equally exciting, I do have to say. Equally, no, not maybe equally, but in a different way, exciting. So we do have the enrollments in the packet. Every month, of course, we visit these, and they're very important to us because each number represents a student, and each student is important to us. I think we're pretty consistent with our numbers. They do come into play during budget season, certainly our October 1 numbers, and we do so many projections and continue to project forward, but we're always surprised at how many wonderful students arrive on our doorsteps in September. And so this is this month's current enrollment. We do have the General Fund Expenditure Report before you this evening for an approval until audited. It is that time of year where we are marching towards our June 30 close, and I will commend Matt Wells. He's doing a fantastic job making sure that these funds are available or not available or maybe headed towards E and D at the end of the year. Sarah, as a new principal, is doing a phenomenal job, being mindful and watchful over her budget dollars. And right now, we're in good shape. Paul.
So I move that we accept until audited the North Borough Regional School District FY 2018 Budget Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report as of January 31st.
Second. Moved by Paul Butka, seconded by Paul Desmond. Any comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor? That passes unanimously.
And probably it could have been a two for approval, but also attaches the Statement of Revenue for consideration, and again, I'm motion to approve until audited.
Paul.
What do we do that?
We have been.
We have, okay. So I'll have some questions afterwards, but I make a motion that we approve until audited the Statement of Revenue dated January 31st, 2018.
Second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Joan. Paul.
So a couple of questions on athletic receipts, which are 241% of plan, and then the, do we have a chance at hitting our targets on student activity fees and parking fees? Because we're at the end of February, and we've only got two-thirds of the plan, you know, realized here, or is there maybe monies we've collected that haven't posted yet? So curious about those three lines.
Yeah, so the athletic fees reflects the transfer from the general fund into the revolving fund, so that, we're going to have to look at how we're actually representing that on this form, because we're clearly, that portion of it is also being picked up in these numbers. The student activities and the parking fees, we are looking at those. We are running the reports. We're going to have some meetings this week to talk about those, to see where they're tracking moving forward, as well as some other fees that we've been looking at.
I mean, I think those targets, I think the estimated numbers are pretty similar to years past.
Yeah.
And we've collected pretty close to target in years past. It looks like we've got a ways to go here, considering how deep in the year we are.
I do know the high school team, the new team, is quite vigilant with our newly licensed and continue to be licensed. I've not only heard that from Dr. Walsh, but from a few and continue to be licensed. I've not only heard that from Dr. Walsh, but from a few students as well. So, if there's any way for those funds to be collected, I have every confidence that those will be. And I think we have some newly licensed drivers coming up in the spring season as well, which will change those revenues.
We do. And because it's semester change, the way the kiddos buy their permit. So, the semester happened towards the end of January flip. That's when the new sets of permits come out.
Right.
Which is why you see kind of the dip in number, but it will grow exponentially because of where we are in the year. The second semester brings in the second 50%. And Ms. Kapava is doing phenomenal work on the student activity fees collection. We sent her the one call. We remind, and it comes kind of in buckets. So, very confident.
All right.
I will say, though, in conversations about the athletic fund, we seem to be up over last year.
Yes, we do.
In terms of overall balance.
Yeah, we're tracking a little better.
It's not 240%.
Not by 700 grand.
No, no.
Not, not that much. And of course, the iota, our interim AD will attribute it all to his return.
Any other questions? All of them in favor? That passes unanimously.
We'll be reviewing the budget priorities in just a moment, when I share our recommended budget presentation. And also, a couple notations on the budget calendar. We did have a very successful Saturday with Northborough appropriations. At that time, all we had was sort of our proposed recommended after coming out of budget subcommittee. And also, we did meet with our financial advisory team in Southborough. And from all comments received on both evenings, it was a very successful presentation. I'd like to thank Lynn Winter and Joan Frank for being present on our Saturday presentation. It is hard to believe that anyone would say it was a great, a great morning, four hours on a Saturday talking about numbers, but it was a fantastic morning. And budgets and discussions about what's going on in our school are very well received, as such the case in Southborough as well. And I believe we have full support from both committees at this point, although they haven't formally voted in terms of where we are with our budgets.
Joe?
Attending, it did seem like four hours, went by pretty fast. But I would just like to commend the administrative staff going through those over numerous years, the wonderful report that you have with the town of Northborough. I was in Southborough, but I think that it would probably remain to be the same in Southborough. But thank you for the wonderful presentation that you made. I mean, I don't think there were hardly any questions, because you thought through the whole process, your whole administrative team, and everybody was present there in case there were any questions. And they were very receptive to it. They took, you know, it listened very attentively, and it was just all very positive. So, something that could be just as bad as going to the dentist was very enjoyable on Saturday. And I just came from the dentist, so I know.
Thank you. And it definitely is a team effort, and I'm very fortunate to work with such great people.
Thank you.
And talented people. Also note on the budget calendar tonight, hopefully we will be able to vote the recommended budget and the assessments to our member towns. We do have a special meeting coming up on March 14th. We have met with bond council. I'm very pleased to inform the committee that we have not been officially rated as a regional district. We are looked at as a town. And as such, they do rate the regional school district. And we did get some initial draft, which I can share with the committee back. We were rated in 2008, and I do need to get my visual out for this. And in 2008, because that is exactly when we went out for the bond on the high school, we were rated, not by S and P, but by Moody's, as an A, I'm gonna have to say this, A, small A3. And in 2010, they revisited the district to see how we were doing, and we were rated an A, small A2. And so, what that means is we moved up. And after this process, which was, I would say fairly intense, and a lot of great work by our new treasurer, we went up and were rated a double A+. And that has a lot to do with the management of our towns, and they certainly indicated that. But in many of the conversations, we also did have the good fortune of talking to them and sharing with them the policies that we're gonna talk a little bit more about tonight. And that clearly made a difference, and that was so indicated in their report. In fact, at one point after their review, they did suggest that the upside scenario, we're just one notch behind a double A, triple A rating, which according to our town managers is difficult to get. They could raise the rating if our reserves were to improve, which again, we have an E and D policy in place. Very pleased, they were very pleased to hear that we are taking that step forward. And then, as we move forward, coupled with the stronger management policies that we talked to them about being put in place. So, it's great news. That helps us in the reissuance, because the rate may be a little bit more favorable. This week, we had anticipated hearing from David Eisenthal, our bond counsel, because he was hoping that he could get some sort of temperature check on what the bond ratings might be. We haven't heard from him yet. There is obviously a point at which, you know, he's suggesting if it dips below, we may want to reconsider moving forward. But right now, we're still on track. And on the 14th of March, the school committee then would accept the bids that are basically presented to us by bond counsel. So, all great news. We were quite ecstatic to get that report back.
Can I ask a question on the, interesting about the triple A versus double A plus rating? I mean, that would make us money if we, if we achieved that better rating, right?
Potentially, yes.
Did they, is there any hint as to how much we'd have to increase our reserves in order to get there? You know, I mean, if we, if we put another 50 grand in the two towns' assessments, and all of a sudden went from double A to triple A in a bond rating, it could generate a lot more money for us over the time of the new reissued bonds. I mean, I wonder, is that a math exercise we ought to be thinking about doing, or?
So, in conversations with our two town managers, because a lot of this depends on their rating as well in towns, and both of them are very favorably rated, given that 70% of our revenue really comes from our member towns, cities and towns. What their perception was on that statement was that it would strengthen our double A plus position, perhaps. There's a range in the double A plus category, and that it, in fact, would be coupled with the implementation of our policies. So, as we know, so how much of that is money, and how much of that is the policy, of the policies going forward, is not yet known. In this case, in this year, we did, in fact, and we'll, we'll share that in the budget presentation, I think we took a significant departure from the past. We are returning back to our member towns, 300,000. In the past, it's been 500,000 or 600,000. And I'm pleased to say, I was gonna mention this later on, but it flows naturally, that there has been a reluctance, I think, in the past, perhaps, because we did not necessarily feel the towns would be behind that at some point. And both of our towns, through the presentations with appropriation and FinCom, that was not even an issue. We talked about the importance of raising E and D. And so, you know, next year, I think we might be able to see that zero out.
I mean, in terms of the bond reissue.
Right. I mean, we could, we'd be certainly happy to go back and ask that question. I did not get an indication that there was a monetary amount at which, at this point in time, would be a significant factor. But we didn't necessarily ask that question. It wasn't offered by them. You know, we've, we had probably two hours or three hours conversations with bond council and, you know, our district treasurer, who's gone through this process before. Her reaction to it was, again, great. In her experience...
Oh, it was mine. You know, I'm not, I'm not saying anything different. But I just, I think that there is a, I think there is a math exercise that you can kind of go through if we knew what it would take to tip us to the triple A rating, you know, in terms of, you know, an increased assessment or something. If it was, was relatively short money as compared to the amount of money we'd make over the life of the reissued bonds, you know, it's a, it's a conversation worth having, I think.
Are there other towns that have that rating? Is there, is it, you didn't, yeah? Would it be possible to reach out to them, or you wouldn't know?
Well, the bonds go out for bid already this week. And so, you know, I think it would be interesting to see. It really does, to a great extent, depend on the member town. So, you'd have to look at the condition and the economic and fiscal health of the two member towns. That plays very much into our rating. I think we could be a deterrent if we did not have good practices within our regional district. But the significant piece of that lies with, with our member towns. Again, one of the things that was coupled with that statement, Paul, was let's see these policies that you have in place go into practice. And I think we are making significant strides in one year, having all those policies in place. I did see the warrant articles, both in Southborough and Northborough, and it is for the stabilization fund, the language for the stabilization fund, both are going forward to town meeting. Worth a question. I don't know, timing wise.
Yeah, no, I am.
I think their biggest concern was the huge...
These are unbelievable, right?
And it was, you know, they went back two years. We had a full disclosure statement update two years ago. So, we're coming from that two-year period forward to where we are now.
Okay. Just a thought, I mean...
I think the bigger concern is the fluctuation in the bond market since we started this conversation. You know, at one point, when we were talking to bond council, the cut point, the cutoff point to consider as a committee, whether we wanted to go forward, was about a half a million. And at one point, when the market dipped, it was down to about 670 on return, enough to warrant us going forward, because any, any savings is a savings. But at some point, and when he presented to us as well, his concern was, what's that cut point, and do we need to have that conversation? So, he seemed to be more concerned about that than, than, you know, this. But definitely worth continuing the conversation with, with council. So, that actually took, I jumped over into my presentation, so I can get right to the budget. I was just rolling. So, stabilization fund going forward, favorable rating, and we'll be revisiting our E and D policy after the budget presentation. So, I would like to share with you the presentation in your packets. You do have the recommended line item budget that reflects the dollar increases and the percent of increase from our FY 18. You also have a proposed budget snapshot, which is a little additional summary that we've not done in the past. So, of all the line items in the budget, this sheet synopses those line items where we saw any changes in the budget. And then, you have a budget worksheet that just summarizes all of the budget line items by fund code. Next month, we will be reading the public, the budget into public record by fund code as we have in the past. Next month, we don't have, it's in the back. Along with the power. Okay, in the back. Oh, that's in the back.
So, last month, we did present the preliminary budget. At that time, the governor had not said its numbers. We did not receive the minimum local contribution numbers from our, from state. And we are, even though we're looking at our budget very early in the budget process at the legislative level, if you look at the entire process, to think of it as a hand of a box, there are eight steps along the way for the governor to finally authorize the new budget. And at this point, we have the governor's preliminary numbers to work with, as do our member towns. We start the budget presentation with our guiding documents, which is the statement of vision and mission. And again, it talks about a safe environment and engaging our students through dynamic learning opportunities. This is the budget process. We are, believe it or not, already starting to talk about 2020. And our budget process begins here at school committee in September, with active dialogues about what our budget priorities will be, meeting with our subcommittees, and moving forward with initial conversations to our, with our town administrators, all the way through to town meetings. Again, last year, they were back-to-back town meetings. This year, again, they're separated, as they have been in the past. So, this is, for all intents and purposes, with our budget, the last budget to be approved, and then we'll move on to town meeting. Here are our budget priorities for the 2019 budget process. And I would just highlight some things that this budget really does support as we move through. The first budget priority is certainly to maintain our high-quality staff. Our staff is extraordinarily talented, not only in their content areas, but in engaging students and going beyond the classroom experience. We also had a four, a five-year plan to upgrade instructional resources. Our departments, five years ago, basically had a conversation about what resources were needed. It had been some time before we spent some sizable dollars in investing in upgrading our instructional resources. Everybody has been quite patient and mindful. We're in four or five. This year, we upgraded some science, world history predominantly. Striving to achieve our class size policies, at the beginning of this year, we talked about how important it was to add some additional sections back in, in the area of social studies, and I believe it was world language. We were able to do that in the FY 2018 budget through some good hiring practices. And those point two FTEs in both of those areas, additional supports in English-language learners was increased as well. In which case, then, this year, this year's budget does not reflect any new hiring in any area, but in fact, provides the opportunity to achieve our class sizes. Prepare all students for high levels of success in various high-stake assessments. Each year, we provide a snapshot in terms of how our students are performing. And as we know, the state assessment test, MCAS 2.0, has turned into an online experience, where Dr. Walsh talked a little bit about students getting the practice of registering for their classes like they would in college online. And in fact, our students are taking the assessments online. We want to make sure that we have the infrastructure and the hardware ready and able for the students to participate in that. And many of the initiatives that are reflected in our strategic plan translate through to our school improvement plan. Each year, the high school, in collaboration with administration and staff, again, identify their priorities and speak to their needs to continue to achieve and grow as a school district. And we feel that while this budget is what we call a maintenance budget, which means there are not extraordinary increases in any line items, and in fact, very few line item increases in this year's budget, in next year's budget, we do feel that there is significant growth that will continue to be realized through the budget that we're presenting with you this evening, because we have not made significant reductions in any line item. Also, to create, to meet the goals set forth in the technology, educational technology plan in the district. When we talked about the preliminary budget, we also talked about this opportunity, which was going to sunset with respect to E-rate, which is sort of if you spend a dollar, you get 40 cents for every dollar you spend on infrastructure. In the preliminary budget, we had made what we consider a significant increase in the technology line item. We are still projecting an increase of $45,000 over last year's budget, which would mean that if we spend $100,000 of that 155.2 number on infrastructure, we would have basically $140,000 worth of dollars to spend, because we would be reimbursed and then invest that additional money into infrastructure. And infrastructure would allow us to upgrade to the point that we could really have great conversations about bring your own device, bring your own devices to make that investment. Now, makes an investment in the financial budgeting process in the future, because we're talking about purchasing less hardware. Students are more comfortable with their own device. And so, this is sort of a one-time sunsetted opportunity, this E-rate money. And so, we wanted to make sure that even if it meant offsetting in other line items, this is a great place to invest FY 2019 budget dollars. And then, to create and fund a short and long-term capital plan for the school. Very excited about our conversation with the booster organization, and are very much in infancy, but committed, continued conversation around multi-use, multi-facility plan, and already starting to get some people who are interested in... already starting to get some people who are interested in partnering with us in the conversation. I was just reading an article in the paper that Shrewsbury is moving forward with theirs. They're still targeting certain dollars for their expansion, again, through the same mechanism that we're hoping to do, which is to have some private funding sources through community engagement. The short and long-term project, a capital plan, is also offset by facility rental dollars. So not only does the budget have some embedded operational funds, those funds are supported by facility rental. I did mention, and we are well underway with our facility rental review, and anticipate that we'll be coming back to before the end of the year with some suggested increases. So all of that comes together to help fund the operational needs of our school and continue to grow. Through this combination, we have also been able to make some significant upgrades to our facility, like keyless entry, and those kinds of things help also security and safety of our students. We've had some budget impacts. As I mentioned, this is a maintenance budget, but we're going to see some sustained incremental growth in targeted areas like instructional resources and life technology. We've had some increases in student support services. Marie Sier, Director of Student Support, to speak to that specifically if there are questions. We had some contractual obligations. We are in our first year of a three-year contract. And again, thanks to our teachers' association for being mindful that at the regional level, our budget carries things in it that other budgets do not at the K-8 level, where expenses like insurance, healthcare, Medicare, workers' comp, and unemployment are actually carried in the regional school bid, the budget. At the time I presented the preliminary budget, we were looking at about a 5.4% increase, and we were uncertain as to the outcome of conversations with our associations. We had hoped that we would receive a favorable vote from our teachers' association to consider consolidation to one health insurance provider. And couldn't be more proud of our staff. We've been spending a lot of time talking about the impact of these costs on our regional school budget, where a K-8 budget may receive a 3% increase. Here at the regional level, a 3% includes almost a 1.5%, depending on the year, allocation to these kinds of costs. It was unanimously voted and approved by the association that they recognized moving to one carrier, while maybe personally not advantageous for them, because it means a change. They really appreciated what it meant to the budget, which means we could go from 5.3, 4% budget that we were looking at at the preliminary stage of our conversation, down to where we find ourselves this evening at a 3.49%, which is in our target range of our member communities. We talked a little bit about technology, infrastructure upgrades, and we will be purchasing some additional mobile devices. Greg, I think they're mostly phone books that we're looking at at this point. All of that will support the discussions that we've had about moving to Canvas, which is our learning management system. And as I mentioned, we are in year four of five of our renewal of instructional resources. One of the things that we were able to do on this budget this year, and it's a small amount, but it's very meaningful, in that we have been able to shift very key staff from grants, which we know will sunset. Grants do not go on in perpetuity. They do, in fact, sunset. And there was a piece of one of our nurses that was still on grant, and that grant's going away. So we were able to make sure that that person is a 1.0, much-needed services for our students, and so we were able to do that. We look for opportunities to slowly transition those grant-funded positions that are very important to us. They're not extra positions, they're key positions from grant to operational budget. And this was an example of being able to do that. We continue to be excited about our Student International Program. When we started this, the mindset was to sort of operate this revolving account to the point that we were able to fund a, or expand our world language program. And I think we have almost an entire body at this point, and enough for part of pieces of a staff member. And so we're hoping that in the next two years, we will be able to do that and be able to fund that position for a couple of years forward, while we slowly move that into the operational budget. That gives more opportunities for students to engage in new language experiences. We rely and we gratefully appreciate organizations like our Booster Club and SDF and NEF in our member communities, because there is no, there is no grant stone unturned by our staff and our administrative team. We're always looking for opportunities for grants to bring in new funding revenues. And we really appreciate members in our community for giving donations and contributions. Many of those we accept here at school committee meetings. We enjoy our collaborative purchasing through the Athletic Valley Collaborative. It helps reduce a lot of our costs, not only for goods and services, but for transportation, particularly in the area of special ed. And first, you'll hear it tonight, we do have the information on Phase Two. Italian Bond has given us the information and identified the five sites that are most solar-ready and feasible for not only canopies, if that's how we chose to move, but also for rooftop. And Algonquin is ripe for both. So they've given us the cost assessment for Phase Two, and we're going to move ahead and should be talking about RFPs soon. And that's exciting. Supposed increases in facilities fees, we just talked a little about that. And also, we're looking at potential offsets for perhaps next year and definitely a year after. It has been Matt, since '08? 10?
Four, which one? The school lunch?
Yeah.
12 is the last time we increased.
So in, since 12, we've had several contract negotiations. So we just, we just want to make sure that we're being mindful of our costs. Certainly do not want to charge exorbitant fees, but we also recognize that there's been a significant cost over the last six years. So we're reviewing that as well. Circuit Breaker, my goodness, we've heard so much about Circuit Breaker, which is the reimbursement from the state for special ed expenditures that exceed the foundation cost per student, $48,000. Thank you to the regional school committee for being proactive and for sending those letters to our legislators. I think we were ahead of most of the flurry that was taking place on the listserv, where people were being asked to have their school committee sign and send letters. The Circuit Breaker funding is, was at a point of 675%. They reduced it to 65%. There was no notice of that, and we rely very much on the reimbursement funds from Circuit Breaker to offset increasing special ed costs. And again, we do receive reimbursement as a regional school district for transportation. And right now, that rate is 62%. Legislature has promised it should be 100%, and they've been promising that since the notion of regionalization, I think, came about. So right now, it's pretty much flat, which means it's a decrease, because costs continue to rise. And again, we do benefit about $500,000 in state, federal, and local grants. Our athletics cost budget is really offset, we talked a little bit earlier, about fees and gate receipts. So our total athletic budget is a two-part funding or a three-part funding. We are looking at an $885,469 cost for all of our athletic programs that we offer, which are many and varied and very important to our, to our students. And we're offsetting that, which is not part of the appropriated budget, with anticipated fees and gate receipts of $348,722. So what that means is this, we started at the beginning of this year with an appropriated budget of $22,304,466. We had, in those initial conversations, preliminary increases of 1.19717, and to get, again, to continue to be mindful of our budget priorities and also the fiscal, found the fiscally prudent practices, working with our towns, we were able to make some budget decreases while continuing that incremental growth of $412,225, bringing our recommended budget, our FY 2019 recommended budget, to $23,082,958, an increase of $778,492, or 3.49%. Just to look at a couple of quick visuals, this was the distribution of increases before our offsets. So again, you can see the significant percent of where our budget, that small amount, that one, initial 1.1 million dollars, looked like. All of these include contractual increases, which is the purple section, which in all schools, you'll see that biggest piece of the pie. There are two pieces that are sort of up, and those really represent what is discretionary for the most part. Everything else was either a contract, or a mandate, or a requirement that we had few options to reduce. So at this point, our major areas, our significant areas of increase, initial increase was contractual increases, increase to special education tuition for those students who we do need to outplace. I'm pleased to report that at the high school, we have so many programs in place for our students where they are able to stay, have their needs met, but stay in our school community. Fixed costs, it would have been a very large piece of the pie had we not had those concessions for healthcare. And then that small piece in, that little purple piece that's coming out is the decision that we made to capture and take advantage of that E-rate reimbursement. If we were to look at what our FY '19 budget is by fund code, which is what we'll be reading into record next month, this is the distribution by area of focus. That's how the 20, the $23 million budget breaks down by specific area. How does that affect our member towns, and how do we, how do we support this budget? Regional districts really is funded by two towns, and so how do we calculate what we basically charge our two communities? We start with the recommended budget, $23 million, and from that, we reduce what we receive back from the state in terms of Chapter 70 funding. We've all heard about Chapter 70 funding, and it's not a significant amount of money in terms of our budget. But it is, because we are one district, we receive that money in as if we were a city or a town. So we reduce the total recommended budget by the amount of Chapter 78. Talked a little bit about regional transportation. That's also a reduction to the amount of money that we're looking for in our budget. There's a little asterisk on that other line. It's actually regional, regional transportation that was still remaining in a carryover account, and so we're applying it to this budget. And then we do receive, because we have revolving accounts that are sizable, like the athletic accounts and so forth, some miscellaneous income that we use to reduce the cost to our member town. Subtracting all of that out, and the number after our budget offsets remains at $19,253,875. The towns are told, basically by the state, how much they can afford, and it is an incredibly complex formula, which we now know, because in preparation for our financial appropriations discussion, I think we've spent more time talking about minimum local contribution and digging very deeply into the numbers and coming out just as confused. But minimum local contribution really boils down to how much can a town afford to pay based on its wealth factor, of property, growth, and income of its residents. And that is just a very simplistic way of defining so many different elements of that, coupled with the foundation budget, which is equally complicated and confusing. So Northborough's minimum local contribution, which is basically what the state says you must pay, is $7,946,363. Southborough's minimum local contribution, and it changes every year, and it's not predictable, So after all of those sort of offsets to the overall budget, what still remains? What remains is an amount of $5,966,430. How is that apportioned? And so we look at some historical percentages, and that's relevant, because we use these to determine the apportionment of the remaining balance. These are our historical enrollment percentages and the swing. So as in every October 1, people are very interested in those numbers, because they determine enrollment by town. The percentage of enrollment as of that date is what's used to calculate that amount of money that remains from the original required or requested recommended budget. With those numbers, then, this is how they are applied. Northborough's portion of the remaining amount is 59.59% based on enrollment. Southborough's 40.41. A 1.5% swing in enrollment is significant. And how does that apportion by agreement? Again, doing the math, Northborough's $3,555,396, plus their minimum local contribution, which we went on the first slide, $11,501,759. And you'll see the accompanying Southborough portion. We talked a little bit earlier about E and D, which is basically a regional district's free cash, which is allowed to be expended for certain extraordinary expenses that you couldn't predict. We have, in the past, in order to help the town reduce their assessments, used a certain amount of money from our excess and deficiency account. This year, we are assisting with a turnback of $300,000 from E and D, or a withdrawal from E and D, to reduce the assessments. Final assessment in FY '19 to Northborough, $11,322,989. To Southborough, $7,630,886. Looking at what our '18 assessments were, and going through the math, that ends up being an 8.81 non-exempt cost to percent, incremental percent to Northborough of 8.81, and to Southborough, 2.84. Moving through the process, how does that look historically? And here we have our enrollments, what the operational budget non-exempt increases have been over time for both Northborough and Southborough, and what their assessments are in terms of impact in budgeting. So that is the budget. We continue to appreciate the support from our member communities and the collaboration with our local member towns. I was congratulating, I knew it's never working through the entire budget.
So just a comment, you know, we can't say enough about how terrific it was that the associations got together and made that change to, you know, to the insurance program. That translated into a significant savings for us. Nobody likes change. You know, I know that I would have real concerns about changing my insurance plan, how my family's being covered. I'm sure those folks think all the same way as we do, but their dedication to this system and those kids is just terrific, and it's worth calling out.
I agree. Yes?
So if I, I mean, if I could, so some other things that have come up during the, for the rest of the committee, the $300,000 that we gave back out of our E and D reserve actually brings us below what our policy says we strive to retain for our rainy day fund, but, you know, I think that was something that we, we did think we wanted to do. It seemed to, it was a good number. It kept us, allowed us to hit that 3.49 number, which kind of was within the target range of where the towns wanted us to come. You know, we're taking a little bit of a calculated risk in keeping our rainy day fund a little bit, a little bit less than we would like it to be, but it seemed like that was a wise decision. So just to kind of keep you guys posted on that, you voted on that policy.
Mr. Buck, I would add that we did receive notification from DOR and DESI that our E and D has been certified.
Oh, cool.
In the amount of $600,000.
That may put us within policy.
Fingers, we're hoping.
Okay. Yeah, and then the rest, I mean, the, you know, the big jump in Northborough enrollment was kind of, you know, the thing that certainly stood out to us as we were preparing the budget and the assessments. But it was a, it was a good process this year, but the associations were very material in making this a lot less painful than it could have been otherwise.
And I would have to say, they did have to vote to open their contracts for that purpose as well, which is, you know, an added step. So just great work by a lot of people.
And after we're done with all this, I believe, unless we, there's been a change in plan, we're also, once we kind of okay the budget assessments, we're going to come in with another motion, I think, to talk about exploring OPEB.
Yes, there are two other items, yes. It's a big agenda, and the superintendent's report this night.
Oh, okay, I didn't see it. It was, okay, sorry. Do you want a motion on this one?
Lynn, did you have? Oh, okay, go ahead.
I move to approve the FY twenty nineteen budget and assessments as follows. Our gross operating budget of twenty-three million, eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Operational budget assessments of eighteen million, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, representing an operational assessment to Northborough of eleven million, three twenty-two, nine eighty-nine, and representing an operational assessment to Southborough of seven million, six hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six. Debt payments of one million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars, representing a debt assessment to Northborough of six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine eighty-nine, and a debt assessment to Southborough of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven sixty-seven. The total assessment, operating and debt, of twenty million, ninety-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars, representing the total assessment to Northborough of twelve million, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and representing the total assessment to Southborough of eight million, ninety thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Second. Moved by Paul Bucka, seconded by Lynn. Any more questions for? And all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you. Good budget season. Thank you for all the hard work.
Hard work.
From everyone. And Sarah, congratulations, it's your first regional budget for us.
Yeah.
There are two items left for discussion, and one is, in fact, the OPEB trust. Part of our conversation with bond council, and we did, in fact, learn this this summer in a few presentations, was that it's very important for cities and towns, as well as regional districts, to certainly begin to think about other post-employment benefit obligations. It's an astronomical number. I know that we are, have, we're not, we don't have our most current numbers. Well, actually, bond council does, because they talked about it, in terms of our OPEB responsibility, which is really about the cost of paying retirees' benefits after they've retired, but continue to be an obligation to a city, or a town, or a regional district. And while admittedly, by bond council and others, and including all the other regional school districts, it is very difficult, perhaps, for a regional school district to actually fund an OPEB trust, because you allocate some funding which otherwise may have reverted to E and D, excess and deficiency, at the end of the year. But moving forward with establishing such trust does send a very positive message, not only to our cities and towns that we're being mindful of this as an obligation, but also to, for example, again, bond council. And just having those policies in place, regardless of the fact that there's significant funding in the not states, that you're aware of our fiscal responsibilities. And so, I would ask the school committee, this evening, we've been talking about this, and being certainly mindful and aware of this looming responsibility to approve my pursuit of establishing an OPEB trust on behalf of the regional school district, and what that means would be. We're going to continue to investigate how and what would be the best mechanism for setting that up, but we would be establishing a line in our budget going forward.
Paul.
So I would make a motion that the school committee instruct the superintendent and staff to explore OPEB trust fund options for future budgets.
Second. Moved by Paul Bucka, seconded by Lynn. Any other questions or comments?
I mean, my, one comment, I mean, we just have to do this. We need to get, we need to prime this pump somehow or other, and I mean, I would strongly recommend that the committee vote for this.
Thank you. It's been a long conversation, and it's great to see we're moving forward with so many of these different things that we've talked about. It's exciting.
And all those in favor? Passes unanimously.
I probably said that too soon. I probably said that too soon. Please don't let that influence your vote. I dreamt about the hands going up many times, so.
Thank you. And equally as exciting is what we've made reference to several times this evening, about really establishing a new policy that talks about excess and deficiency, and a range within the five percent that we're allowed to retain, if we're fortunate enough to be able to do that in any fiscal year. It's a five percent amount of our operational budget. As the operational budget increases, then certainly that, the amount that we can retain increases. And so, we took a look at this last week, last month, and since then, believe it or not, the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools looked at this policy and said, gee whiz, can we take this and start sending it out to other people? So I would say that that's a huge compliment to the work that we've done here as a committee, and the wordsmithing that we've done. Again, our regional treasurer, who has had experiences with such policy in other regional districts, very favorable, and we have sent this off as well to our accountant to review, and he said the same thing, gee whiz, can we take this policy and share it? So it's before us this evening. I don't know if it needs to go to policy subcommittee at this point, or if we can...
I thought we didn't?
We did talk it.
Yeah, I thought we, that's one of the policies.
And that's why it's here.
Yeah.
I'm still calling last month, last week. And so, if there are no other changes, I think we can probably vote tonight, too.
Paul.
So are we going to call it a first reading, or are we just going to vote for it as a policy?
We read last month, so this would technically be a second reading.
Okay, so I would make a motion that we accept and move into our policy. The excess and deficiency policy is defined in the handout tonight.
Second. Moved by Paul Bucka, seconded by Joan. Questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor? Passes unanimously.
So I know, I mean, the audience, we're going to expedite these minutes and get them off to bond council as soon as possible. And to show that we actually took the vote, and it's on record now, so this is great. Thank you very much. Our own, the capital plan is in the packet for distribution, and I'm sure we'll be reviewing that again, as we continue this year and next as well. No changes since our last meeting.
Did we talk, I don't remember, did we talk about the warrant article on the stabilization fund? Or did I miss it?
It was out of order.
It was out of order.
It was out of order.
Oh, okay.
I think we missed it, too.
Yeah, we certainly revisit that, I think we talked...
No, that's okay.
Yeah, we did. Everyone was hoping you'd say that, Lynn.
Okay, then moving on to old business, there is none. So moving on to policy. Second reading of E one-ten and F one-hundred are in your packets.
So I think, Madam Chair, we, with good reason, decoupled the fee structure from the policy language, and so that allowed us, then, to continue to make changes with the fee structure piece of the policy, without having to have the policy itself held up in the policy process. So that's what we have before you this evening, and as I mentioned, we're making good work and good speed in terms of examining our facilities rental prices.
Okay. Lynn.
I move that we accept the policy and procedures for use in rental of school facilities, E one-ten.
Second.
Moved by Lynn, seconded by Paul Bucka. Any comments, questions? Then all those in favor? That passes unanimously.
Thank you. Naming of the high school, parts of the high school and grounds, this policy really did take on an increased level of importance. It was already an important policy, with some of the conversations that we had about privatization and the work we wanted to do around raising funds for expansion of our athletic complex. So this sort of paves the way, without having the policy language encumber our work. And there is one piece missing. We are adding the link, once the final document, the language of this policy is approved, we know that we're going to identify a link where the current sites that are named on campus can be found, and that was good work of Patty Cress at the time, making sure she had sort of documentation of what those look like with folks. So Mr. Desmond reminded us that that needed to be there, and we will be adding that as soon as the policy's done, and we have a place to put this. And thank you for your language changes that you suggested from the last meeting.
Paul.
So I move that we accept the modified policy, F one-hundred, naming of high school, parts of high school and grounds, as written.
Second. Moved by Paul Bucka, seconded by Joan. Any comments, questions, discussion? All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Excellent.
The next ones are actually policies to rescind, because they are either now obsolete, because it's not our practice, and/or they're contained elsewhere in other policies. Recreation trips, we don't approve this, we haven't. It's an old policy, it's from nineteen seventy-six. Part of some of this conversation also is embedded in the conversation we're going to have around the field trip policy anyways, so we thought that it's appropriate to reduce the number of policies we have, and look at this for a rescission. The next policy as well, student demonstration, again, look at the year, nineteen seventy-one. I remember participating in a few of those myself in nineteen seventy-one. But again, it's a policy that we haven't made reference to for some time, and not really applicable in today's environment. And the third one is, this is certainly outdated. I don't even think we had anything called the cloud, except what was looking, what you looked up at in the sky in nineteen seventy-four, because the way we keep our lists and the rights of privacy are now just law, clearly defined by student records law. And part of, by the way, mandatory training, that all staff have to participate in.
Paul.
I move that we rescind policies I three-ten, J two-ninety, and J three-ten.
Second. Moved by Paul Bucka, seconded by Paul Desmond. Any questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor? Those pass unanimously. And we, and we're distributing the approved policies, E one-eighty, I one-forty, and I three-hundred. Thank you for your work in prior meetings. And now, audience sharing. Do you have someone in the audience that would like to introduce them?
We have A.J. Ryan. He is a member of our Boy Scouts here in Northborough. He is here this evening, and we're delighted to have you. And Mom, as part of his service obligation, I think you're working towards your badge, and we're thrilled to have you. I'm sure you were thrilled to be here this evening. It's probably one of the most exciting meetings that we've had, so it was perfect timing on your part, and he has the agenda, and it's great that you're here, and you get to see what we do on Wednesday nights, as you're a student here, as a sophomore, freshman. I thought you were a sophomore, right? Freshman at Algonquin, so welcome.
I'm sure you'll watch the rest of them every Wednesday on TV.
Riveting.
And if you can't, they're on YouTube, they're taped, no problem.
Audience sharing, Joan.
Oh, I just have a question.
Oh, absolutely, go ahead.
Are you a member of a Boy Scout troop in Northborough or Southborough?
Northborough, our troop one oh one.
Oh, okay, good. Okay, thank you. I just went, I just didn't know if you had any questions for us. We did, okay. We'll save a report.
When does it end?
What?
You picked a good one, it's kind of short. Any other audience hearing? There being none, we are moving on to personnel.
Distribution of, the personnel report is in your packet. We do have a retirement notification, it won't be until next year. Sarah Lydell has been with us in our mathematics department for quite some time, about fifteen years, I think, and she is very artful in teaching geometry, and combining that with quilting. And if you've ever had a chance to go to her room, it's just magical. And really, she will be missed, but she's moving on to retirement, another career, so she will be, she'll be with us for a while next year. Andrew McGowan is going nowhere, he's part of our administrative team, and we're happy about that. But we know when staff are dipping their toes in the water of administration, we want to have them be administrators here in the district, but we also would love to see them just stay in the district if administration is not their next happy career path. It's challenging, so he's taking a leave of absence from that, but he's still going to be with us. And just an update for everyone, we are sad to see our iota, Fran Witten, leave, but he's smiling more. He certainly has done just yeoman's work this year, filling the gap for us and reconnecting our kids with some of the programs that we've had over the years. We have completed a posting. Yesterday was the last, I think, posting deadline date, and have had, with all good reason to anticipate this, an overwhelming response to the posting. We, Sarah, myself, and Fran, a number of other folks, Becky, our human resource director, have identified a process. There will be a facility to educators and coaches involved, members from the Booster Organization, our athletic administrative assistant, otherwise known as Superburns Extraordinaire, and students, of course, at multiple grade levels, as well as parents. We have what we think is a realistic but ambitious schedule in place, so that we can make sure that they learn from Mr. Witten, and have some overlap while Fran is still with us. He has agreed that, without too much arm twisting, that he'd be available over the summer, because certainly things take place over the summer as well. And so, we're looking at a fairly rigorous schedule, meeting with the chosen committee members, and looking at interview dates, and hope to have a final interview in, by my office, Good Friday, or April second, no later than April second. So we're moving along, we want to make sure that we've provided enough time. If, despite the abundance of applications, we need to go out again for another A.D., we have time, you know, on A.D., we want the right person here at Algonquin. I'm thrilled that we have such a talented team of people who will be on the committee, and it's such a great representation of everyone who's, who should have a voice at the table. I know Sarah did a quick survey as well, out to parents, and not a complex one intentionally, so just sort of asking, what are the qualities and what's most important to you in an A.D.? And that's important information for us to have as well. So we'll have those updates for you as we move along, and we're happy about the process.
Great. Okay, done with personnel?
Done.
All right, the communications in your packets are the summary of the conflict of interest law for municipal employees. It's not just something that we're distributing. On the last page, there is the acknowledgement of the... So while I have you all here, if you could kindly fill it out and leave it for me, and we will get it to the appropriate town clerk, there actually is a different procedure for new members. So for new members, you have to take that online, I'm sure you've already taken it. Yeah, so when you take that online, you have to get some sort of certificate that you've completed it.
Yes.
So if you could just forward that to...
And, it's done, it's, yeah.
Excellent.
I had to take it for work.
We are done.
Oh, he didn't make me take it twice. As exciting as it is.
It is riveting.
We should probably offer that opportunity to A.J., so he'll have some more excitement.
We should probably offer that opportunity to A.J., so he'll have some more excitement in the process, at least to walk through that.
There is no way to fail. It doesn't let you fail. You should absolutely take it. Great, terrific, okay. So if you could seriously all just fill out that last form and leave it for us, that would be terrific. And the harbinger is in your packet. Quite a, quite an issue. And we have approval of bills and payrolls as always.
Quite a stack.
Quite a stack, so don't run away.
All the colors.
And agenda items for next month.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
We'd like to have guidance for that. I think it's important to hear about the Making Connections Initiative that they have. And with that being clear.
Got it. With the security.
Yeah, face and update. Absolutely. I think they go hand in hand.
True.
And I'm sure there'll be some interesting topics.
Are we hearing from any departments?
Guidance. The agenda is light, we might be able to hear from English as well. I know we had some conversations about what we had, what department we hadn't heard from, and we've been so, you know, focused on budget, then sometimes something that we put on the back burner. So as we develop the agenda, it might be possible to have two presentations.
Okay.
Public hearing is brief, so.
Ow, yeah. Any other suggestions for agenda items next? Let's bring back the minutes.
We have assignment in the Warren articles of the town meetings?
Yes. Okay.
Probably be only one, right?
Well, and if they want us to support the stabilization, Warren article. I've seen the descriptions from the two county ministries for detail that they might need, want us to read.
Okay, so before we adjourn, our next meeting is unusual and will be a total waste of time for those of us who attend it if six of us don't attend it. So it is March 14th, which is a Wednesday, but it is not our usual Wednesday, and it is a meeting that is prior to the Southborough School Committee meeting at Trotier because that's where all of our administration will be. So I implore you that if you cannot make it, which, you know, I get it, it's sort of not on everyone's schedule, but please just tell us so that we know if, and the agenda, the agenda, the primary agenda is all about the bond. So it's, that's why the timing, that's why we're not just waiting until the 21st because we really need you there, so.
And it'll be brief? The Southborough School Committee follows at 6:30. It's a regularly scheduled Southborough meeting. And we will be doing a dual poll as well, but thank you for.
Will we be taking a vote?
Five thirty.
So it's important that we have a majority because we have a vote to take.
Oh, yeah. If we don't have a quorum, nobody should come. Paul.
I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting of the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee.
Second. Moved by Paul, seconded by Paul Desmond. All those in favor? We are adjourned.